Our regular meeting this evening. Members present, Don Jamison isn't here, so that's why I'm heading the meetings today. There's Jonathan Mates, Don Rue, Amy Sidney. We've got Cheryl, and we've got Beth, and we've got Matt. We've got everybody here. Student reps, Juliana Levick, Grace Davie, and Isabel Tharnton, are they joining us?
Juliana is joining us, as we're going to recognize her this evening.
Great. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:06. Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item is adjustments. We have one, recommendation to move item H2, recognition of Juliana Levick forward to be heard next.
Second.
Yes, all right. We've got a second from Jonathan Mates.
All in favor.
All in favor?
We are.
We're all in.
Any discussion?
None.
So who's?
Any against?
Who's up very much?
Yeah, I don't know.
So you? So, yeah. So, I don't know. Juliana, are you there? It looks like you're muted. Are you there?
Yes, I am. My computer is being really slow right now, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, all right. That's what I was going to say if we had a chance for video, but we don't. But that's okay. We're glad you could join us. You're joining us as an alumni of Sanford High School as a graduate, as you graduated a week ago Wednesday for that. So congratulations. And normally what we do is prior to the graduation at that meeting, we try to recognize our seniors who have been members of the, who've been student representatives on the school committee. And so we weren't able to do that at our meeting, two meetings ago. And then the last meeting, we couldn't do it because you were participating in the senior activities. But we're glad you're able to join us tonight so that we could properly thank you and recognize you for not only your efforts to help be a representative and share your thoughts and those of your classmates in terms of any issues that came up. But it's probably safe to say, we've never had a student rep who's had to go through everything that you have, Juliana, because you were the, you can always say that you were not only a school committee rep, but you were a school committee rep during a pandemic for that. And so I know, on behalf of us at Central Office, we very much appreciated and valued your perspective and everything that you're able to come back and bring to the position to help all of us as we do that work. So we wanted to have an opportunity where we could recognize you. And I think already, we did give you a token of our appreciation for that. Did you receive that, Juliana?
Yes, I did. Thank you so much.
Awesome. So can you kind of give us an update on what the future holds for you and what your plans are?
Yep, so this year or next year, yeah, this coming year, I am going to USM to study art. And I have a concentration in art and entrepreneurial studies. And I'm going to be a Promise Scholar. So I got in completely free for my classes. I just have to pay for room and board. So I'm very lucky.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
And what do you, and what do you hope to do in terms of down the road after USM?
I'm hoping to, I'm not exactly sure what I want to do yet. I just hope that I can be creative and do something that I really love.
Awesome. Yeah, that's, that's great. That's great. And I think we were able with a token appreciation to give us something to help you out at USM, because I think we knew that in terms of that's where you're heading. So Juliana, can you, any last comments or anything that you want to share? Can you kind of give us an update? I guess your last student update on how the end of the school year went and the senior activities and graduation?
Yes, so first of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you guys have done for me. This was such a great opportunity, and I'm so glad I took it. And for the senior activities, graduation was great. It was hot, definitely. But we pushed through, and Senior Night was amazing. It was so fun, and there were so many activities. And I'm so glad that the school and the parents got to provide that for us. It was very, it felt. Sorry, it felt very normal for everything that happened this year.
Good, oh, that's so good to hear. We're all hoping that's how you would all feel.
And sure enough, that you, not that you and your classmates hadn't been through enough, but when it came time to get ready for graduation in the marching practice, you had to do it in some very hot conditions.
Yes, it was definitely hot, but it was worth it at the end. Just being able to walk across the stage was really nice.
Nice, nice. Well, Juliana, thank you for, once again, for all of your efforts. And we want to wish you the best of luck. Anything else that anybody in the school committee or the Central Office team wants to share?
Just want to say congratulations and good luck in everything you do. Don't be a stranger.
Thank you so much.
Every once in a while, let us know how you're doing. We'd love to hear.
Yeah, of course.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right, Juliana, thank you. It would be okay for you right now as a graduate to sign off if you want to. You're more than welcome to stay. You know that. There's always an open invite. And in the future, feel free to always come back and join us as well.
All right, thank you so much.
It's only six o'clock, so I don't blame you.
Yeah, we won't take it personally.
I'm going to guarantee. We're saying, the show's right.
All right, well, congratulations to Juliana. Moving on to the next item, approval of minutes. No minutes to approve. We'll move on to public comments. Any public comments from anybody? I don't see any. Am I missing something?
I don't, I don't see any. And unless Paul wants to mention something. And I did not receive any other comments up until earlier today.
So no public comments. We're moving on to communications. We have none there as well. Next one is committee reports. So we've got construction updates, and that would be Matt Nelson.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief a little bit. I'll start with the high school and technical center. As you know, we notified the contractor, our intent to do the work and backcharge this past spring. The retainage that we're holding out to be able to do all that work is about $300,000 to address all of the items. And we are engaging contractors, or we are self-performing the work to do that. We have reached out to the roofing installer, but really haven't been got much of a response. So that's something we're looking at, maybe using our own roofing contractor to help address those issues for that, along with our own people for the card reader and F-Wing. Don Nichols has been working with the subcontractor for the stadium grandstands, and will also be ordering the mats and the gym for that. One thing I do want to point out, though, that has been challenging is the manufacturer of the rooftop units. They've been working with the installer of the units, because if you remember, we've had some tripping concerns. And so the engineers have raised several questions about that. And we're awaiting responses from the contractors and the manufacturer for that. Once we get those responses, we'll set up a date to meet and review that with all parties for it. So that's a high school and technical center update. Any questions on that?
Any questions from anybody? Nope, no, no questions, Matt.
Going on to Margaret Chase Smith School. We did take advantage of Principal Chuck Potter's retirement in the sense that we wanted to have Chuck very much participate in a site visit, final walkthrough between the contractor and the architect and the Department of Education. We did that Friday, June 11th. And overall, things are doing very well. There were 21 items noted that the contractor is going to coordinate some resolution, but a lot of that is just some cracks or stains or some leaking, nothing major. There is the unit cabinet heaters we're operating, and they should not be calling for heat based on the outside air temperature. So that was one area where the contractor will need to coordinate that and review and come up with a resolution for that. Also, another one that I think is important is we're going to probably want to pave the fire loop there to assist with parent drop-off traffic. That was something we did this past year. But obviously, going forward, they'd want that paved. And that's something that we do have in the budget to be able to do that. And then the energy management system lacks a graphical user interface for plan representation. We have a proposal to add one, but we're, that's something that should have been included in the contract. So we're going to be continuing to push that. But all things considered, everyone was very happy and very pleased in terms of MCS. Any questions on the MCS project?
No, no questions here.
Sanford Pride, once again, I'll try to be brief. In review with the building officials, school furniture can begin moving into spaces once the school and the contractor is ready. We can't have teachers in there yet until the life, safety, and fire alarm install has been completed and approved. One thing that has come up is the architect is reviewing a more recent issue that was brought up by the electrical inspector. The existing power lines coming to the building are noted as being too low, and the inspector wants them raised and a new pole set to support them. So our architect is reviewing several options to do that and coordinating that with CMP on the best approach. The timing of this is not ideal, as one thing that's been noted is the electrical inspector says he will not give the electrical permit until that work is completed. And that's concerning, because scheduling with CMP could become an issue to complete the work in a timely manner. This will also include a subcontractor, as they own some of that work, to the service wires inside the building. So that's something we're going to have to pay attention to. That could be a potential problem. The current schedule by the contractor shows all work being completed by the second week of July. There still may be some lingering items, but the expectation is that teachers could begin moving into their spaces by that time. And that does assume that the existing power line issue that I just mentioned does not hold up any of that ability for us to move in and get started. And the contractor is going to begin doing punch lists on the contractor's work later this week. And that's an abbreviated update on Sanford Pride Elementary.
Matt, I have a question regarding that. And you know how much I like it when you abbreviate these construction reports, so I hate to add to it. But you come here regarding moving a pole and raising the lines. I get that. This is a city building. You've got city employees, electrical inspector, and a fire marshal telling us to do something that's been in that way for decades. Is there any way you can talk to Steve Buck and say, hey, come on, fellas, let's work together? You can't get CFP to move for months.
That's true.
They are so behind schedule.
Yeah, is that, yeah, that's a good point. As I became aware, I think what I'm, my plan, Jonathan, is I am going to talk with our code enforcement officer and the fire marshal. I have ongoing communication with them. And so I will kind of bring that up, and I will point out that that, the timing of that and the impact on that. We've had to do that in other cases when there's been some information or directive shared from the electrical inspector. We've been able to navigate those. So I'm confident that I can, I just haven't had that conversation yet. I hope to do that this week. We'll see where that goes. But I also meet regularly with Steve Buck, and that is something that we can bring up, because it's not a situation of us not wanting to not do it. It's only, we're only as good as the information we have and when that information is shared with us. And because, you know, for us, we are in a pretty tight timeframe here that, you know, we don't want something, an issue like that where it won't be getting done. We wouldn't want it to hold us up, because as you pointed out, Jonathan, we were in that school for many years prior to that. And, you know, this is just one of those items that when you're doing a renovation, you now all of a sudden run into these types of issues. So, yeah, I do plan to follow up with the proper people and to be able to discuss this. And my hope is that we can come to a reasonable approach and one that's not going to have us cause any delays.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on construction? One thing I did mention in my update to the school committee is I would like to try to set up a tour for our core building committee and the school committee to be able to get in there and be able to see all the progress. It is really coming together. I know I was in there last Friday and just really pleased with how things are coming together. So feeling really good about that and want to be able to try to get everyone else in there so that they can kind of get an update. It's come a long way since the last time that we had the core building committee and the school committee in for a tour.
That would be great. Okay, moving forward, commentary about Sanford Performing Arts Center. We did have our last meeting of the year, and we discussed upcoming events for this next year. Brett and all of us were discussing making sure that we have a plethora of shows that go everything, cover everything from, you know, comedy to holiday shows to Broadway, to Celtic music, to everything else that we could think of so that we have a nice, broad program for everybody throughout the year. We've got some moving lights that are being installed, and that's going to add to our presentations and our ability to have different shows come and book us as their theater. And that's really about it. That's all I have. Next commentary would be about WSSR, and we haven't had a meeting, so I don't have much to add. But I don't know if, Matt, you have something that you would like to mention?
No, I don't have any update there. That would be probably, Don would be able to be in a position to do that, so.
Okay. Sarah, do you have anything you'd like to mention? Sarah?
Oh, sorry, it took me a minute. I'll just throw in, I think we had a great end of the year covering all those different events. And I'm just finishing up a few videos that I hadn't done yet. There's a new video about the Flower Project at the middle school that you should go check out, and the Band Camp that happened last week. There's a good little concert. And a couple other things from the band and the chorus that maybe kind of slipped under the radar right after graduation. So just go check out the YouTube channel and catch up on some of those videos.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Thank you.
All of us, Matt. Matt, any progress with the city on funding SSR TV?
No, not, we're not for any reason that there's not support there. We just haven't been able to connect with the business at the end of the year. But that's still something that we're very much trying to set up.
Yeah, I mean, it was discussed during the last meeting, but we haven't had, we had to re-schedule over and over again, so.
Keep hoping.
Yeah. All right. Next item is the Adult Ed. Do you have anything?
I have not had any correspondence with, you did a call on Lisa Lynch since graduation. So I'm reaching out, so.
I'm sure everybody's taking a little breather, a little break. All right, next is the Curriculum Subcommittee. And that is made up of Beth Lambert and Amy Sidney and myself. And I think Beth will be the one that's going to speak to this.
Yes, okay. A couple of weeks ago, I met with Amy Impala for our second and final Curriculum Subcommittee meeting of the school year. And at that time, I updated them on some of the curriculum changes or implementations that we're adding for next year. The first one is a new math curriculum for grades six through 12. It was brought to my attention by the high school math department that their current curriculum, that we still had two years left on under our contract, wasn't meeting the needs of our students. So we started doing some research and included the middle school as they were supposed to begin looking for a new curriculum this year. We reviewed Reveal Math Curriculum with an Alex intervention. They watched demonstrations. They had access to the actual textbooks, to the student online platform, to the teacher online platform. And they took about a month to review everything. And they voted to implement the new curriculum, which is nice because it was able to, it's with the same company, so we were able to roll over our remaining two years for the high school, so we didn't lose out on that contract. And I think that the students and the teachers are really going to enjoy it as a remediation piece, the Alex program. So it will work with the teachers to help support the students as we try to get everybody back up to where they need to be. You'll be glad to know that our handwriting without tears is, we've had it K to two. Now we're implementing it in grade three this year, which is the beginnings of introducing them to cursive handwriting.
Very.
Yay. I knew you'd like that. So that'll be happening this year. And we've also been asked by several fourth grade teachers, they would like to pilot the grade four writing. And I said, sure, I'll get you the resources. And for those that want to pilot, they absolutely can. So they're just doing it a year earlier, but, you know, if they're going to ask for it, I'm not going to say no. And then we currently have Lucy Hawkins Phonics Program, K to two. I had our literacy coaches do some research. And to follow that, we're going to be moving to Fountas and Pennell Word Study for grade three. That will be implemented this coming school year. And grade four asked if they could pilot the grade four, and that was by their choice. So I said, sure, I'll get you the kits. And we can pilot different units, talk about what works, what doesn't. And then hopefully, by the time it's a full implementation of next year, they'll have a good scope and sequence ready to go with the coaches. We're going to continue using Gizmo, which is the online lab platform for the science teachers, six through 12. They said it was very beneficial for the students. They loved it, gave them a lot of formative assignments to do in practice. And then finally, the other big piece, we, I worked with, Steve and I worked with the Special Education Department, and we have purchased the System 44 and Read 180, reading and writing curriculum for them as another resource for them to use for their students. And so we purchased that with the workbooks and the licenses, and we'll start implementing that after training this summer. Those are kind of the big things that is going on in curriculum. Did I miss anything, ladies?
I think so, for sure.
All right.
Thank you. All right, any questions?
I don't always promote life skills. I just think we need to keep doing it. Graduate, seniors, middle school, just, I don't have enough strong enough skill set to build. I think we need to piece that up.
Are you, are you in reference to our personal finance?
Well, I mean, that's one, that's one piece of the life skill, yeah, yes.
And I will tell you today, the department chairs at the middle school and high school, the social studies department, have been meant, and they're, they're working in kind of a silo to create a really strong scope and sequence for grade six through 12 social studies courses. And part of that, in the middle school, they wanted to spend a day this summer working on the personal finance to really kind of firm that up and the different pieces that they're working with their students on. So each year, they make more and more progress. They're doing a really nice job, so.
And they'll be able to do it in cursive. This is great.
And they'll be able to do in cursive. I know, it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just here for that.
I was just going to say, they're going to be reading. All right, well, thanks so much, Beth. Okay, next items are superintendent's reports. So we've got student representative reports.
Anybody?
Anybody? I don't think anybody's. All right. No, it's summertime. What are you going to do? Okay, recognition of Juliana, we did it, Juliana, already. An update, return to in-person learning for 21, 22 school year?
Sure, so Governor Mills administration informed main schools recently that expects all schools to offer full-time in-person learning this fall, and that the Maine Department of Education has announced that the remaining physical distancing requirements will be relaxed next school year. Governor Mills also recently announced that the Maine State of Civil Emergency is going to end later this month. And the state's last remaining face covering requirement, which only applies to indoor pre-K through grade 12 schools and childcare settings, will also end on June 30th. The Maine CDC will continue to strongly recommend, but not require, that unvaccinated people, including those under 12 years of age who are not yet eligible for COVID vaccine, wear face coverings indoors. And those required health and safety measures that the Maine Department of Education has in their framework of schools, starting July 1st, they are just going to become recommendations. The guidance will continue to reflect best practice for keeping students and staff safe while the emergency is over. Obviously, COVID-19 still remains. Schools and childcare settings, they choose to adopt their own mask or other health and safety requirements, as some businesses have done for that. The SOPs that we'd have to follow in the case, if there is a positive case, those will remain in fact, remain in effect. And therefore, all eligible staff and students are still strongly encouraged to get vaccinated. And vaccinated people who are deemed a close contact to a positive case and who are asymptomatic are not required to quarantine. So obviously, as that fits in with our plans to come back and offer in-person learning five days a week, those are some welcome news in terms of those relaxed requirements to be able to help us moving forward. We plan to implement those at the end of this month, and that will also be something to impact us and help us for any summer program that goes on. Also, when it comes to in-person learning, that's our goal right now. We're really focusing on in-person learning. We are looking at some options for remote learning. There'll be an application process there is the expectation. But right now, our plan and our emphasis is on in-person learning for that. And regarding technology, our plan at this time right now is not to let that be sent home with our K through four students at this time. And then we will continue to look at quarantining. That's going to be, as I mentioned earlier, the SOPs for responding to a positive case are going to continue to be in place with that. And then we also are looking at how we're going to continue moving on with these, with these relaxed requirements. I think you're still going to see for us, in terms of right now, we will not be requiring face coverings, but that will probably be something that we could pivot to if deemed necessary or if things change for us to be able to do that for. We will continue to try to have some of those PPE places and dividers and things that we had already in place this year, continuing to do that for next year. And also, we already had plans for us to really look at the physical distancing requirements. So we are using our significant ESER funds to be able to add additional positions, to be able to reduce those class sizes. And we will continue to move forward with that plan. That becomes a big advantage for us, even with the relaxed requirements, because we'll be able to have smaller classes and a bigger focus on social, emotional learning as well as any educational recovery for that. So are there any questions on a returning to in-person learning update?
Questions?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to ask, there's probably a can of worms, but.
Ask it, ask it.
So a lot of funds available to us. Are we going to use Willard again? We've been hiring temporary teachers. That's probably not the right title. I apologize if it isn't. But can you spend like 60 seconds on that?
Sure, yeah. That was one thing back originally, Jonathan, we were looking at as an option as we were trying to put all of our plans in place. And even prior to these different updated requirements or relaxing of the requirements, we had made the decision that we were not going to be using Willard at this time. We're able to be able to go in and through our scheduling and our staffing to be able to do that. There still may be some situations where there is some room sharing, or there have to maybe be, some of our teachers might have to be moving from room to room on carts. But we'd already made that decision with that in advance. We will continue to hold out right now, even though there are no plans right now to use Willard, just in the event that if there are going to be some things that do change, that's probably. that's probably a nice insurance policy for us. But as of right now, we are not planning to use Lafayette School or Willard School at this time.
Good.
Go ahead. Mine is a different topic.
So we're going to keep them under our umbrella for another year when I get into the back of the city.
Correct, I think, as I mentioned, it's probably something for us with all the circumstances and where things are, we are going to continue to hold on to them just in the event that we may have to pivot and be able to have to use those facilities.
Is it possible you could do that for two years? I mean, I, I would think you would, but just wondering.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that could be a possibility. But I think right now, we had started in our leadership team meetings with the city as we were discussing future uses of those. And with COVID and everything going on, we felt the best course of action was to be able to kind of hold on to those things this year in the event that we might need to be able to use them. And then I think we'll have ongoing discussions as the year goes through. We'll, we'll be able to monitor things. And then that will help us to see if that's going to be something long-term or there are going to be some other, other uses of those, of those facilities.
That's, that's wise, I, I support that, thank you, that's good, thanks.
So Matt, just to be clear, when you see the, the guidelines for the relaxed distancing, so is, is it safe to say that basically there's no distancing requirements when we plan for September now? Or is there?
Remember, there's not any requirements, they are recommendations. So right now, they, they have been relaxed to that point. So I think that's, we're going to have to walk that line and thread that needle. But yes, I think right now, that gives us some flexibility that we didn't have before in the event that we, where some of that spacing in, in some areas may be difficult to adhere to.
And then when you were saying the masks, can you just say that one more time? Cause you kept going, I was like, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, right now, we're not, our plan right now for the face covering, since they're not required, we're not going to be planning to use those, to require those. But I think we're going to also be able to monitor that. And depending on trends and where things go, we might pivot to having that become a requirement depending on where things are at.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. Took the words right out of my mouth. Okay, so any more questions about returning next school year? All right, Matt, would you like to continue with the hiring update?
Sure, so our hiring continues, as, as I mentioned at our last couple of meetings, this has really been a focus of our school department, our administrative team and all the teachers participating on those hiring teams. In addition, positions we've hired, we've also hired 37 positions with COVID funds, six at the high school, four each at our three elementary schools, MCS, CGL and Pride, 13 at the middle school and 13 throughout the district. Right now, we're in the middle of other hiring going on. We still got 17 positions to hire. At the high school, we have an anticipated math teacher position, career explorations coordinator, anticipated for the band teacher, assistant principal at the high school, SRTC, we have a plumbing instructor to still hire. At Sanford Pride Elementary, there's a grade one teacher and an art teacher. At CGL, a grade two teacher and special education resource and a special education self-contained. At the middle school, administrative assistant, special education resource, that's both a replacement position and adding a new one with COVID funds, special education teacher and a nurse. District-wide, we have a nurse with COVID funds, elementary school counselor with COVID funds and a special education behavior coach with the COVID funds for that. So as I said, we're actively involved in those processes right now as either they are in the process of screening and holding interviews or they are where the positions have been posted and they're getting ready to hold interviews. So once again, kudos to our, to our whole team here. In terms of the focus on hiring, it was nice for us to kind of get out in front of that. And I've been very impressed with the quality of candidates that we have and I expect that to continue here as we continue to fill out positions. Any questions on the hiring?
Okay. All right, thanks so much, Matt. And last but not least, for superintendent's reports, the summer school.
Yes, yep, summer programming kicked off last week. I know it was, it was exciting to see, we, we held our administrative end of the year meetings down at Sanford High School last week on Monday and Tuesday. And it was great to see all the excitement and everything going off. We kicked it off with a band camp down at the high school. They had almost 50 students in grades five through 12 and they were able to work together as a large ensemble and as well as opportunities to work with specialists in smaller groups. You heard Sarah mention earlier that they have a recording of that on our YouTube channel with that. So that's something to look at. SRTC also opened their doors to Sanford Middle School students and some of our ascending school students in grade six through eight last week to give them a taste of the seven programs that they offer, seven of the programs that we offer. And the high school also kicked off their credit recovery classes last week. We're offering in-person instruction for math and science and online opportunities for English, social studies, health and personal finance. And that, this first session is going to run until the beginning of July. This week, SRTC is back again with their second week of introductory programs to our ascending schools for sixth through eighth graders. And our high school is continuing with their summer classes. As we move on to July 6th, we're going to add a lot to our summer programming. Our Jump Start program for incoming kindergarten students and our Title I summer programming will begin. Our instructional camp directors will begin working with the Sanford Recreation Program. Read Alouds at Lunch and Breakfast Pickup will begin this week. And when it comes to that, you can check out our calendar to see who's going to reading, what they're reading and where they're reading for that. July 12th, the second session of the high school credit recovery classes are going to begin. Mrs. Williams, the middle school librarian media specialist will be offering her STEM Create Your Own Website class that week as well. Later in July, Mrs. Williams will be offering another STEM camp where students can build their own video game. And then later July on the 28th, there's going to be a theater camp for middle school students. And we did send out information today that our Grab and Go Summer Meals began today. And a reminder that the Summer Meals program is open to all children and teens 18 and under. No eligibility requirements, registration is not required for that program. And so I encourage people to go to our district website to access that as well as any more of the fun activities that we have going on this summer for families. So it's nice to see summer programming get kicked off. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
How many students are taking this opportunity for like, there's just so much being offered?
I can help with that, Matt. So I think like you shared, we had about 50 in the band. I think, I believe Kathy had about 20 join her SRTC, maybe a little bit more than that. We have about 10 each for the two STEM offerings that are creating a website and then a video game and about a dozen for the middle school theater camp. So. The high school kids have to work, so we, we're not going to be able to do the high school theater camp because they couldn't get the time off. But we were able to get some middle schoolers.
And for Title I, we have about 100 kids in K through five Title I program. And we have about 30 Jump Start kids, incoming kindergarten students that are participating in that program, so.
Nice. Offering so much, I think it was wonderful. Oh, yeah, that's an awesome summer school program. I think everybody should be really proud. Stanford should be really proud. Okay, unless anybody has any questions or anything, we can move on to director's reports. So first, we have Assistant Superintendent Steve Bucier discussing pool testing and ESEA.
Matt Nelson, can you share the screen with me for a minute?
Have to change you, I can't share it, it looks like, you're now the host.
Okay.
I'll let you do that, Steve, but you gotta, we gotta promise to share it back when you're done.
Nah, don't worry, Matt, don't worry, don't worry. For my report tonight, I have a couple of things. The first thing is in regards to pool testing. The last meeting, we talked about pool testing and its use in schools. Right after we had our meeting, I think it was that same week, Governor Mills came out and she relaxed the physical distancing requirement and the mask requirement for students. And so at this time, if we were to move forward with pool testing, the only benefit would be that students, if they were identified as a close contact, they would not need to quarantine. So that is what we're looking at. Right now, it's on hold as we continue to monitor what happens here the month of July and the beginning of August. And it is something that we can pivot to rather quickly if we decide to move forward with it. But that's where we are at with the pool testing. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No, yeah. Yeah, okay. I don't think we have any questions on that topic, Steve.
Okay. The second item on my agenda tonight is in regards to our ESEA, which is our Title Fund allocation, which is the federal money that flows to the school system. January, June and July are the months in which we have to formally apply for these funds. Going to go over you tonight how we plan to spend those funds in our application. The process that we use to develop these priorities is that we had a planning team called the ESEA Advisory Team. We met a couple of times throughout the spring. The team was made up of school committee members, parents, teachers, Title I staff, school counselors. We basically reviewed our school department data and then we looked at what we currently are spending our funds on and what we think we need for the future. So if we look in the first column, our Title I funds, we, our preliminary allocation is a little over 1 million, at 1.2 million. If you remember, these funds are used in our K through eight schools to provide support for those students who are identified as needing support in the areas of literacy and math. The bulk of the money that's going to be spent with these funds has to do with positions. For our Title I literacy positions, you'll notice underneath we have the positions listed for all the schools. We'll pay for our Title I math teachers in two of our schools. The third position is paid for out of local funds. It also pays for our literacy coaches. And then the administrative support that goes along with that program. We pay for three fifths of an administrative assistant position here at Central Office. And then our coordinator for the Title I program, she'll be working three days a week next week, next year. And so the grant will pay for a third of the funds and the local budget will pay for two thirds. Awesome involved in these funds are, this is what pays for our summer school programming for our Title I students and for our incoming kindergarten students for Jump Start. This grant also pays for those funds, pays for professional development for our Title I literacy teachers. Usually they attend the Literacy for All Conference, which is held in Connecticut. This is a conference where they really fine tune their skills. Also pays for family engagement. You remember this, earlier this year, we had an author come to the district. These are the funds that paid for that. It pays for family nights and it pays for books, to send home books with our Title I students. And then also required in the grant is homeless transportation and supplies. Usually we budget about $25,000 in regards to homeless transportation and the supplies that our homeless students may need to access school. So the Title I grant, Title I funds are aimed to support students that are having difficulty in K through eight. And it's pretty much in line with how we have spent the funds in the past. You may ask, well, why are we paying for point eight position for our Title I literacy coach and only one third of the Title I coordinator? The reason why we're sharing some of those costs with the local budget is because we cannot afford to take them entirely out of the Title I funds. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the Title Funds? These are preliminary allocations. And so once we get the final allocation, then we will divvy up the money and how it will flow into each bucket. That's one of the pieces, pieces we were waiting for to do that. Any questions in regards to that, Title I?
No, no questions, Steve, thank you.
Moving on to Title II, Title II has to do with professional development. This is really where the majority of our professional development funds come in. These priorities are in line with what the A Team also talked about at our A Team Retreat. The first one on there is social emotional learning, professional development. We have a new and updated curriculum that will be coming called Character Strong that we will need to provide some professional development in. Also, other areas of social emotional learning, anxiety, trauma, ACEs, you name it. We need to put a bucket in there for social emotional learning. Also uncovered in this budget is our grade level leader stipends. These positions are the leadership for our elementary schools. At the elementary level, we do not have department chairs. And so these funds pay for that leadership during our ERDs. Continue with our restorative practice work that we have spent over the past two years working on. We're putting some money in here to continue that work. Beth mentioned earlier the math professional development we had with Reveal with six through 12. We budgeted for professional development here for that. Also in our administrative team, we talked about equity, diversity, diversity and inclusion and possibility of needing some funds in the coming year with that. Now, we do not have to get very specific with some of these goals. We just want to have a bucket of money available in the event that we need to pull from some. Continue with the literacy professional development. We have Lucy Cawkins Professional Development that we're continuing with. A bucket of money for leadership development for both our department chairs, grade level leaders and administrators. And then a pool of money for professional development in those content areas where we are not able to provide professional development within the district, such as art, music, ELL. Oftentimes, these are areas where we don't have in-house expertise to provide professional development. So we have to seek professional development outside. And so we put a bucket of money aside for that. So you see a wide range of professional development priorities in the district and not a really a whole lot of money when you look at it. $200,000 for the number of employees we have is not a whole lot of money. But we do the best we have to develop our own leaders to support the professional development of our staff. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that?
No questions. I, I actually do. The, the restorative practices, is there a plan to send? I, I, I think, is it like a three-day series or something like that for that training? Is the hope or the plan to send staff that have not gone before to some of these?
I think with restorative practices, Amy, we've been using a consultant by the name of George, George Conant. He was a member of the Restorative Practice Collaborative. And he actually held some of those workshops, he was involved in delivering them. We bring him in and it's a cheaper cost to the district and he provides professional development during ERDs in his small group. So we bring someone in rather than sending people out. It's cheaper for us.
Great. Okay, anybody have any questions? No questions, thank you so much, Steve. Appreciate it very much. All right, we've got curriculum director Bethany Lambert talking about NWDAs.
That would be me again. Mr. Nelson, can I have access to the screen? Or Steve still has the power, Steve can.
Okay, I'll give you the power, Beth, hold on. Okay, go back, go ahead, Beth.
Thank you. All right. So NWEA, I know back in the fall, I went over this in a little more depth. So I'll try to keep it pretty, pretty short and sweet tonight. So just a brief reminder of what is it? It's an assessment tool that we use to monitor student, student progress. It's also considered our universal screener. It's administered in grades K to 11, and we do that three times a year. Fall, winter, and spring. The fall and spring have the full test or the full assessment. Winter is a shorter one. It's meant to give you just kind of a snapshot of how your students are doing. It shows student achievement in relation to standards and national norms. Provides instructional next steps to our teachers. It also talks with our online edgenuity. It creates pathways and those are determined by the fall NWEA scores that the students will work on throughout the year. It shows student growth fall to spring, which is what I'll be showing you tonight. And this year, it became the main state assessment for this year and next year. And after that, we're unsure at this point. All right. So now we're just going to dive right into the data. So what you're looking at here, this is K through eight. So these are the scores that our students, this is our mean, this is our average of our kindergarten students. Their RIT score came to 142.5. And you can go down through and see what each grade did in the fall. Then I compared it to, or added the, the spring reading scores. Again, this is the average. So you can see that like in kindergarten, we've had over 11 points growth on average. And then in the, the kind of seafoam green column, this is, whoops, sorry about that. This is what they call the achievement norms. So what they do is they take the average of all the students, all the kindergarten students that have taken NWEA across the country. And, and that this is the average of them. But I do want to qualify that and tell you that this was taken pre-COVID. They updated it in 2020, shortly before COVID hit. So I just want you to keep that in mind. So when it shows that like in first grade, our spring scores were 168.5, but the average norm was about 171. It shows us a little behind. These are not taking into account what COVID did to the educational system. Give you a second to take a look at that and ask me any questions you might have about it. But if you, the, the important thing is to see that between fall and spring, we did show growth in all of our grade levels in reading. Any questions about this slide?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. And I can share this with you after, if you'd like. So here are math scores. So again, it falls into the fall, then the spring, and then the achievement norms. And again, we showed growth from fall to spring, which is what we want to see in our students. Any questions about our math scores? No? Okay. All right. And then finally, the high school. The high school is a little different for math. I'll point out the spring first. So for grade nine, our spring, and you have to, so I did it a little differently where we have semesters at the high school. Students in ninth and 10th grade that have English and math semester one, take their NWEAs at the beginning of semester one, at the end of semester one. Then at the beginning of semester two, those kids that have English and math in grades nine and 10 during semester two, they take what would be the equivalent of the fall test first and then the spring test. So we have like two different batches, if that makes sense. So the spring reading for the springs students, you can see it's 226 over the national, over the average norm. It's 221. And then with social studies, math, it's different because they, there's, there's the six plus math test. But then there's also one specific to Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. And that's what our high school math teachers like because it gives them really good feedback and information about where their students are for that particular class they're taking. And there's no achievement norms for those, so I didn't put those in here. But I did add grade 11. This is the first year that we've done NWEAs with grade 11 as it was part of the main assessment system. So you can see where our, our juniors kind of fell into line with the achievement norms. So after looking all of that, what are our next steps for the upcoming school year? We'll continue to use edgenuity, K to eights. After we take our fall NWEA scores, we will upload those scores and create those pathways for the students to begin working on. Again, we go back to the brand new Reveal Math Curriculum, six through 12 with an Alex intervention. And we're offering some small group instruction using data to help our teachers group our students together to help meet their needs a little bit better. Any questions?
Hey Beth, one quick question. When you were sharing the data nationally, is there any data for the state of Maine that we can compare to? Or is it just that all national?
You know what? I, I don't know, John, but I can take a look for you. I, I've never seen anything that goes by state, just kind of the, that big overarching umbrella. But I'll look into it. I'll ask Ellie. She's my expert. Thank you. Now I have to make, Matt?
All right. So moving on to our next item, the new business. First one is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, you're now the host. Sorry.
Legacy naming rights and Matt Nelson will speak to the attachment J1.
Okay, I'll just get it set up here. So first one is our Legacy Foundation's been at work. And they, at their level, did improve the acceptance in terms of a donation that was made in memory of Stephen J. Cutter at one of their recent meetings. And so what is in front of you this evening is request that the donation naming rights be presented to the school committee to finalize the process. So in looking at that, they, in consideration of naming rights for donating $25,447, pledged to the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation, they're asking to grant the naming rights for the SRTC's fire apparatus bay. The parties agree that the Sanford Regional Technical Center Apparatus Bay shall be referred to in its publications and communications by the Sanford School Department by the name Stephen J. Cutter Memorial. The naming of the SRTC Fire Apparatus Bay in the name of, in the memory of Stephen J. Cutter, there'll be two plaques to be created, one in the outside wall between the two overhead doors and one inside the actual apparatus bay. And the money donated is going to be allocated directly to the students and faculty of the Fire Science Program for years to come. So this evening, we're looking to take action on that to accept the $25,447 donation from the friends and family of Stephen J. Cutter through the Sanford Legacy Foundation and grant lifetime naming rights to the Fire Apparatus Bay at the high school and technical center.
Is there a motion to, no. Everybody's saying, okay?
It's a recommendation.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. So we have a second for the recommendation to accept the $25,447 donation from friends and family of Stephen J. Cutter.
Discussion wise, I, I think, I've said it many times, and this is nothing against who names or what's on what rule. I struggle with lifetime naming rights. So if I vote against this, it's got nothing to do with the family and friends of, it has to do with, what's the life of the building 50 years? What happens if that fire apparatus space changes to another use? I mean, I, I think, you know, for a lot of money, I can see lifetime naming rights for $25,000. Granted, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. I struggle with lifetime, so that's why I said my piece. And I've said this before in other matters, it's not just this. That's all.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Yeah. What would you rather it be named, like after?
Oh, no, it's not, it's not the name. It's not, it's not, I, I think it's wonderful if family wants to make a contribution in the name of. I just think that the $25,000 for lifetime naming rights is quite a good deal. That's my, I mean, I could see, and I don't think it's up to us to change the legacy committee major. They're coming to us saying, hey, we'd like you to do that. At the end of the day, the school committee complains for all good and bad, mostly bad. So it's up to us to approve it. I've just never been a fan of lifetime naming rights at a, up we don't know them.
Okay.
I just, I just want to add in, Jonathan is right. He's been pretty consistent with that. Amount, though, is consistent with other, in terms of other similar naming rights. Done that. So that, that amount does fall into where it is on other similar naming rights done previously.
Okay. So we had a motion for a recommendation.
Second.
And seconded by John Rue.
And a discussion.
Okay. So we had our discussion and we're going to vote. Do I?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Is everybody going to vote? All right.
I'll, I'll vote against it on the lifetime, based on the lifetime timeframe.
Okay. So.
Three to one, the motion carries.
Three to one. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, please, I'll do it.
I'm so glad. I keep freezing. I keep switching and thinking in Spanish. It's driving me crazy. Okay. It's because the camera's on me. All right. The second point is the legacy renaming rights. Matt Nelson will speak to attachment J2, renaming rights for Pratt and Whitney Engineering Robotics Room at SRTC.
So to have that done in, in memory of friends and family of Stephen J. Cutter in the Fire Apparatus Bay, then that did require a change because that's where Pratt and Whitney had a naming piece already there. And so the Legacy Foundation did a lot of work there. They did speak to key representatives in Pratt and Whitney about moving their current plaque from the Fire Science area to the Engineering and Robotics Room. That would, as we mentioned, allow for the Stephen Cutter Memorial space choice. While it also can, it will continue to honor the many contributions to the Sanford School Department. These are both one-time as well as in-kind donations from Pratt and Whitney by positively modifying their space designation. So Legacy Board is asking to accept the change in location of the Pratt and Whitney plaque to the Engineering and Robotics Room with that. So that would be the recommendation forth the, this evening.
Any discussion or questions? All right, let's put it to a vote.
Well, I need someone to make the recommendation and then a second.
So recommendation to approve the request from the Sanford Legacy Foundation on behalf of Pratt and Whitney to relocate the space allocation from the SRTC Fire Science area to the SRTC Engineering and Robotics area. Any discussions?
Okay. Amy seconded? All in favor? Okay. The third recommendation is photography.
I couldn't see the vote there. What was the vote?
All in favor. Okay. Number three, photography art FP. Cheryl Fordy will speak to attachment J3.
Okay. So we went out to bid for the photography. It's kind of one of those interesting ones where there's no money that we actually have to put out to the, the person that actually is going to be doing the service. It's actually our parents and families. So I really wanted to pay attention to the cost of how much it would cost for a student to actually get those, those pictures. And when I did that, it really, really stood out that the two local companies that we have been utilizing and have been giving us great customer service and that everybody has been happy with, their costs were also the lowest out of all of them. The beginning on, for the, the staff and student photography, there was another company that started out at the same rate, but their, their higher packages were a lot more expensive. So that was kind of, you know, the deciding factor on a lot of it. I went through, I did it based on, I looked at their pricing, if they have large school experience. Some of them did not even have experience in the state of Maine. We, they gave us references, some gave us references that weren't in the state of Maine also. So that was a concern of mine. Longevity of having contracts, that was kind of all over the board when you looked at all the, the six different companies. But when you got down to it, it really was about the cost that really, the cost and whether they are part of the community. I felt that the current providers are not only give us a very good value for our money or for the parents' money, but they also are part of the community and they work with us and they help out. And they really strive to do their best for our, our students. So I am recommending that we keep the current providers, which is the staff and, and student photography services to Studio by the Pond. And the sports photography to go to Don Tremblay Photography.
Okay. Any discussion by anybody? No? All right. So looking for the recommendation to award the 2021, 2024 Student and Staff Photography Services bid to Studio by the Pond and to award the 2021, 2024 Sports Photography Services bid to Don Tremblay Photography.
Second.
All right. John Rue, second. All in favor? We're all in favor. Right. Give me a second. I've got papers. All right. Next would be contracts and Matt Nelson will be speaking to those.
Yeah, just give me a second here to. Okay. So we've spent a lot of time this spring negotiating the various contracts. If you remember, last year, we made it so that with COVID, we only entered into one-year agreements. So that meant this year that practically almost all of our agreements were coming due. At a previous meeting, we already approved the food service contract. And so we do have three before you tonight. The school committee has had executive sessions at the, prior to their last two meetings, including tonight, to be able to go through in more detail for that. But we would present to you tonight a recommendation to ratify the Sanford Teachers Contract. That is going to be a three-year contract. We also would ask that you ratify the Administrative Assistance Contract, and that is for a two-year contract. And then we also would like to make a recommendation to ratify the EdTech Contract as well. And that is a three-year contract that also lines up with the teaching contract for that. So a big help to everyone in any negotiation. It's usually of give and take, but we're able to come back. And also, as we negotiate these contracts, help us to be competitive in terms of when it comes to any openings, filling those openings. Any hiring, also making us competitive as well when it comes to competition for any of those different positions. So kudos to Amy Sevigny and John Rue. They were involved in these three particular negotiations for the teachers as well as the administrative assistants and the EdTechs. So as I said, a lot of that work has been done, going over that in executive session. But we put those in front of you this evening for ratification.
I'd like to make the motion to ratify all three contracts as presented. The teachers, the administrative assistants, and the Ed.
The teachers, the administrative assistants, and the EdTechs.
Right, motion, second motion?
I second it.
Amy seconded. All in favor? All in favor, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
The Reserve Funds Fuel Cost Stabilization Fund. Cheryl Fornier will be talking to attachment J five.
So the reserve funds, back in June of 2017, the citizens voted to create four reserve funds, the Fuel Cost Stabilization Fund, the Capital Reserve Fund, Unexpected Special Education Cost Reserve Fund, and Health Insurance Reserve Fund. So what I've done is I've showed this document to show how much money we'd like to move into these specific reserve funds. Once we put the money into a reserve fund, the only way you can actually have that money or use that money is by the vote of the school committee after a public hearing. I would probably do it mostly during a budget process because then it would fall with having the public hearing also, unless it was an emergency or something like that. But the first one is the fuel stabilization costs. What we did is we looked at what we budgeted in 2020 and how much we actually spent in 2020 for our fuel costs. And we had $81,429 that we didn't spend, and we'd like to move that into a reserve fund to have for future costs that could actually go up. Same thing with Capital Reserve Fund. This one's a little different because in the city charter, it actually says that we're supposed to put this money and use it for future costs. So this one is actually similar. We had $322,000 worth of a budget and we spent $233,000 of it in fiscal year 2020. So we'd like to move $88,696 into this reserve count to be used in the future. And I gave you all the notes on that. One that's a little different, during the course of this current year, we actually, the school department received a check in the amount of $239,236 from Harvard for premiums paid. A portion of that check will be paid out to employees, but we would like to move the $187,864 to put it in a reserve fund to be used in future costs of health insurance so that we could lower our expense in the future. So I would like to move all these monies, which is a total of $357,989, into reserve funds for future costs expenses.
And so I'll jump in. Thank you, Cheryl, for presenting that. But obviously, as you look at these in the timeline, this all matches up right around the COVID time. So that was where we were able to, through COVID, in terms of that, that's where we were able to capture some savings, especially when you're looking at it a year ago in the spring when our students and everyone was fully remote and people were not going to the doctors. And so those are things that you're able for us to be able to capture these, and that's why we would also like to keep them dedicated to those certain areas in those reserve funds so that we'd be able to have those for future use when needs arise.
Any discussion comments or anything?
Oh, I would comment, Matt's right about the COVID year. I think when it comes to fuel, you see it, it's in my world, but gasoline prices. So last year, fuel, they were giving it away. They're not giving it away anymore. So I think, Cheryl, you're gonna eat up that fuel reserve well before, so hate to tell you that.
I think you might be right.
So anyway, I'd make, following the recommendation, I would make the motion that we support all three of those and move forward.
Okay, anybody second the motion? Seconded by John Rue. All in favor? All in favor, Matt?
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Why? Okay, I did.
Seconded by John Rue. Okay. And then number six, SHS SRTC Scheduling Subcommittee to discuss composition of members and timeline of a proposed subcommittee to review scheduling at SHS SRTC.
Yeah, so this was an item, I know in a recent meeting, we had talked about this. And so following that meeting, I know Steve Rusier and Beth Lambert and I, we met to start having some preliminary discussions regarding that membership on a soon-to-be-established advisory committee. And so I did want to be able to share that information. I shared that, at least some preliminary thoughts as we were trying to look at a committee. It didn't take long for it to get big for that. I know there was some talk when we were at a previous meeting where there'd be a committee, but then there'd be a lot of like subcommittees or work to do, at least with certain populations, to be able to make sure that we were getting input from as many stakeholders as possible. And then the thought was trying to at least establish this committee and have an initial meeting in August before the 2021-22 school year begins, where we could really kind of review the charge and expectations and start to work on developing a timeline so that that wasn't something that was done, you know, the beginning of the school year can be pretty busy once it gets going. And so I think we wanted to do our best to not have to compete with that beginning of the school year or wait for us to get going with that and have at least an initial meeting in August so that we could be able to try to plan this out. And so I know as I was talking with Don Jamison, the chair of the school committee, one of the things Don very much wants to do is kind of be very transparent in terms of this. So he wanted to make this an agenda item so that we could be able to have some conversation about this before we were, as we were wrapping up this school year and getting ready to head into summer, but also looking ahead for planning for next year. Unfortunately, Don, with his work commitment, is not at this evening's meeting, so I'm not sure how the committee would like to proceed.
Okay. Any comments or?
Any suggestions in terms of at least some of the ideas and things that we were talking about? I know originally, we were having Don and Paula represent the school committee. I think Amy was gonna be kind of like an alternate for that. And then you had your central office team, would be myself and Steve, and then also Beth as a curriculum. And then obviously, if you're talking about the high school and the technical center, you want to have the principal, Matt Peterman, and Kathy Sargent, the SRTC director. We'd also, Beth Luterno would be a great resource from the school counseling office. We'd also want to make sure that there was teacher representation from the high school as well as SRTC. We'd also want to make sure that there was classroom teachers, but also looking at having other teachers represented, everything from special education to the allied arts and music with that. And then there was also the question about, we'd want students and parents involved as well, if we'd have people on a committee. As I mentioned, we'd be wanting to go into probably more subcommittee work or at least trying to get those subpopulations where we did have opportunities, where people did have an opportunity to provide their feedback. So that was kind of what I had shared, what we'd come up with with a quick first look at it from the central office team and wanted to put that to the school committee for at least further discussion, ideas, suggestions, or other feedback.
I think that's a good starting point with those folks to at least have an initial meeting and let that group decide. Who is missing, how to break it down. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess if you're looking for the blessing from us, I would say yes, that's a great way to get started and bring us more information in August.
How many, I guess I'd ask the committee, with this advisory or overall, the larger committee, I'm assuming we do want to involve parents and students. We may have to go do some further surveying with all parents and all students, but is that, is that fair that we'd want at least some parents and students on this initial advisory committee?
I don't think it will hurt to have parents on there. I think it's probably the right thing to do because they've been the ones that have been very vocal about this, Matt. So I don't have a magic number, but I think there needs to be some parents on there.
Yeah, we had discussed, I know we all talked about it, sorry, Amy, I know we all had talked about it before. It was mentioned that we should make sure we have parents and students that represent all different stakeholders.
Or all different types of learners.
Yeah, all different types of learners and all different types of people. Yeah, that would definitely need to be.
I mean, after the first meeting, having some parents on there, as Amy's saying, I think real quickly, once you give us the feedback in this, you know, the August meeting, it will give us more direction on what we think as a school committee's missing. But it's kind of hard to give recommendations, and I really don't know what the layout's gonna really look like.
But, you know, I struggle with committees bigger than two, and you're already at 15 and 20 of this, that's a bit unwieldy, but I think you have to start there and then you break it down into subcommittees, categories if you're looking for. That group to do that.
Well, almost maybe start the meeting off with everybody having, you know, three minutes to kind of say where they're coming into, where they stand, so you kind of know where the majority of the people in the room stand and then kind of, you know, so that it's, you know, a circle conversation.
You know, that's a great idea. You need a pretty strong facilitator to make that.
Yeah.
You say three minutes, I agree with you.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of time, but 15 to 20 people, that's an hour of just sharing your brief thoughts, your hopefully unbiased thoughts.
Right, and especially just knowing what everybody's opinions are in the room.
And I come back to the comment I made several weeks ago, this is about the students.
Correct, yes.
So I just hope the committee keeps that in mind all the time.
So what would you like from us right now?
This recap, we're looking at probably, even before we get to parents and students, we're somewhere looking at 14, 15 people. And then if we do have parents and students, do our best to try to have them be representative of all the different learners as well as viewpoints.
Yes. And then from those, you know, however many it is, then we do subcommittees. Everybody does their own piece of work and then we put it together and then we present it to the entire school committee, right? That was the thought process.
Something along those lines. That's good.
Okay.
Let's just, I don't know if you see it, you're going.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, I hope that everybody that's watching this tonight sees that we have been making progress and that we are moving this forward because it is something that we take very seriously.
And we'll continue to do like that timeline, looking at August before the school year gets going with that initial meeting and planning and timeline to be able to help us move our work that way as the, you know, throughout the school year. So, good.
Kind of book the dates sooner than later so that people are good in their calendar.
Yeah, and you're probably gonna need the performing outside.
Yeah. True.
Just making a joke, but it's kind of safe.
Actually, I disagree. I think that would be the worst place to have a round table around, I think the cafeteria is small, the camp. It's not that big, it's round table, but like the pack would be.
No, it would be crazy.
Be tight, too.
I was joking.
That joke, it was a joke, it was a joke. I want to get it on the record that I'm.
At first, I think it's so comfortable, what are the other nations about that?
I think one of the more exciting parts of this conversation is that we're not talking about COVID or construction.
Yes.
But get back to actually education, so.
Yes, that is true. Very true. Okay, so.
And it's the directive.
All right, Matt, you've got the directive. We can move on. Okay, item K is old business. I see none. So we move forward from that to resignations. Superintendent Nelson will announce the following resignations.
Yes, I will. Just let me share my screen here. Okay, Nelson Bernardo, second shift custodian at Sanford High School, effective June 18th. Kevin Donahue, elementary art teacher, effective the beginning of next year, granting a one-year leave of absence to Devon Garabedian, social worker at CJL. An athletic resignation, Judy Martin as grade eight, middle school field hockey coach for grade eight. And we did have an extended school year teacher resign before that got going, Kelsey Murray. And also Audrey Turner as food service, also resigned back at the beginning of June.
Wish everybody good luck and good futures. Next is staff appointments and.
And some of this was, as we expand our summer programming that I mentioned earlier in the superintendent's report, one of the things that we're kind of, this is new territory for us. There were situations with that SRTC summer for the middle school students in the band camp instructors, so I did want to announce those. We did, as far as who we had in place for those, as well as some more of the upcoming summer programming with around Title I and the extended school year. So appointing Dee Ames as a band camp instructor, Sandy Berry as a band camp instructor, Veronica Boggs as a band camp instructor, Joe Bolduc, Jason Brown, SRTC Summer Camp, Caleb Burke for the band camp, Valerie Dumas, extended school year, Deanna Farrell in the SRTC Summer Camp, Haley Francore for Band Camp, Melissa Gould, Title I Summer School, James Harmon, SRTC Summer Camp, Erica Joy, the extended school year, Susan Lammerow, SRTC Summer Camp, Anita Levine, SRT Summer Camp, Monica Moore and Gabriel Reed for Band Camp, Jed Russell for the summer school, extended school year program at Sanford High School, Jed Russell, also a summer school teacher, Erica Scarono, Band Camp Instructor, Harold Smith and Timper Thornton for SRTC Summer Camp, Kelly Tibbetts, Amy Turgeon, high school summer school teachers, Linda Valencourt, Band Camp Instructor, and Lori Works, a summer school teacher at the high school.
Hey, Matt, I just want to make a comment. I had a parent talk to me about the SRTC Summer Camp, and they have, I believe it was an eighth grader that went to the, a week or so ago, that really wanted nothing to do with it, but parents kind of forced the young man to go. And it's now the young man, this is the direction he's gonna go into once he gets to high school. It was everything, it was more than what he wanted, he wanted no part of it, and it was everything he just loved.
That's awesome.
And I just want to let people know that, that he just loved it.
It sounds like mission accomplished, right? Those are some of the things we're trying to do to get exposure, especially early exposure to kids about that. So that's, that's awesome. That's great.
I actually have somebody, I don't, I'd actually know a child too.
You too.
Of another one who had the same experience? That's good to hear. And it's only gonna grow.
It's only gonna grow.
That's awesome. All right, the next item is staff transfers.
Yeah, a few to announce. Lori Flannery is moving from a grade one teacher at Sanford Pride over to a kindergarten teacher at Sanford Pride. Aaron Fraser, replacing Trudy Martin as the grade seven, she's moving from grade seven field hockey, she's gonna go up to the now open grade eight field hockey coach. Rachel Gallagher, moving from a grade four teacher at CJL to a kindergarten literacy EdTech two at CJL. And Joanne Springmadermet, moving from a school counselor at Margaret Chase Smith School to a special education social worker at Margaret Chase Smith School.
And next is staff nominations.
Yeah, we continue to do some hiring. So would like to nominate the following people. Jeffrey Corper, a science teacher at Sanford High School. Ivy Gardner, a grade six ELA teacher at the middle school. Sasha Hampton, a grade three teacher at Sanford Pride. And Devin Talbot is a social worker at Carl J. Lamb. All four of these positions are. All four of these positions are uh, through uh, for COVID funds to the S R Federal Funds. So they are new positions for the upcoming year. My recommendation is to approve the nominations as presented.
All right. Um, motion?
Make a motion to accept those nominations.
Right, and seconded by John Rue. All in favor? Oh, sorry, Amy. No worries, we're all in favor, Matt. Uh, right, next item is policies and procedures, that's attachment P. Second reading of policy, J L C B Immunization of Students. Recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, second reading of policy, J L C B A, uh, what's, sorry, hold on one second.
Question.
Let's see, J L C B was last updated in March 2018 to reflect additional immunization requirements for students entering grades seven and twelve. Um, the updates to this policy reflect changes to immunization requirements as a result of L D seven ninety-eight, which remove, removes both philosophical and religious exemptions as exceptions to main immunization requirements. Um, it's just important to note that these changes go into effect starting in September 2021. And I recommend to you guys to approve the second reading of this policy.
Okay, recommendations to that policy, J L C B as presented.
Second.
Yes, this is a question for Steve. Steve, why, why just grade seven through twelve? Is that because some of those vaccinations aren't until that age? Or I guess I'm just curious, I mean, I support the recommendations, cheers.
The um, in grade seven, entering grade seven and entering grade twelve, um, a few years back, they added additional um, immunizations. They added a T DAP booster and the M C V four, which is an additional vaccination, those were added. Um, and so that's why those were added to that policy, John.
Okay. You're, you're saying he's agreeing, so.
Yeah, do it.
Do endorsements.
Do it, all right.
Seconded by John Rue, and all in favor? All in favor. All right, next item is items for future agendas. Anybody have anything they would like to propose for future agenda?
I think uh, one thing we're gonna have to do is uh, I think we have a tentative agreement right now with our uh, administrators' union for their contract. Uh, we continue to work and, and be hopeful that we might be able to come to a agreement with the custodian union contract. So I think what I'd like to do is, knowing that there's an executive session um, to go over um, so superintendent's mid-year review next Monday, the twenty-eighth. I was wondering if we could have a uh, brief meeting at the, on the twenty-eighth at noon uh, with the uh, very limited agenda, just to approve that administrator contract. And if we are able to come to any other contractual um, tentative agreements as well, that we could do that as well on uh, next Monday, the twenty-eighth at noon time. Then after that meeting, we'd be able to adjourn and then go into the executive session. That would be my recommendation as we look ahead to um, future agenda.
It makes sense, Matt, we just put, let's make that agenda, two agendas.
Yep.
And if we needed, we don't.
All right, so for future agendas, we'll have tentative agreement with admin contract and the custodians possibly, and then um, approve of those contracts, and then we'll have our regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
True.
All in favor? Okay, calendar announcements, is this something I do?
Just announcing.
Oh, okay, so Monday, the twenty-eighth, we have the executive session at noon time, central office.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, no, no, you got one more.
Well, yes, but, but that's it. Okay, so last one. German, do we have a recommendation to adjourn at seven forty?
You do, you, you got a second.
Okay, got a second from Rue. All in favor? We're all in favor.
All right, thank you, everyone.
It's adjourned.
Meeting adjourned, you, everybody.